Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the August 6, 2025 council meeting. If you're able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us to approval of the agenda and consent agenda. And we... Roll call, roll call, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Cassena?
Here.
Mayor Gabriel is absent. Councilmember Daniel?
Here.
Councilmember Sonar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Axted?
I'm here.
Councilmember Askin?
Here.
Councilmember Dothet?
Here.
Student Representative Tanner?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, that brings us to approval of the agenda and consent agenda. And I see we have no laydowns tonight. So, pleasure of council. Councilmember Askin?
I move we approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Are there any additional revisions to the agenda and consent agenda from the council? Seeing none, would the clerk please read the consent agenda into the record for us?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Axted. Approval of the special meeting minutes of June 30, 2025, brought to you by the city clerk. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of July 2, 2025, brought to you by the city clerk. And new business action approval bills to be ratified. Action approval purchase order and purchase order amendments requiring council approval in accordance with KMC 7.15.020, brought to you by the administration. Action approval consent to assignment and assignment and assumption of lease agreement of Lot 2, Block 1, General Aviation Apron Number 1 amended, brought to you by the inner administration. And introduction of ordinance number 3481, 2025, increasing estimated fiscal year 2025 revenues and appropriations in the general fund police department and accepting a grant from the Alaska High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for Drug Investigation Overtime expenditures, brought to you by the administration. Public hearing scheduled for August 20, 2025, and that is your consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any public comments on any of the consent agenda items? Just read by the clerk. Those are the ones with the asterisk if you have the agenda. Okay, seeing none. Unanimous consent was requested. Are there any objections? Okay, hearing no objections. The agenda and consent agenda are approved. Moving on, we have no scheduled administrative reports. We have no scheduled public comments. So, that brings us to item D, unscheduled public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? If you would please come forward and state your name and generally which town you live in, and you'll have three minutes. And the mic is... You can stand or sit. And if you press the button down there, the light should come on. There you go.
Okay, hi. My name is Ellen Sheehan, and I live in Kenai. And I'm here tonight as both a concerned citizen and as a former shelter volunteer. I volunteered at the shelter probably six or eight years. And this letter was drafted by a group of concerned friends who are concerned about the situation at the shelter. It has come to my attention that the Kenai Animal Shelter is once again without permanent leadership and will be closed for 12 full days in August. The city is currently in the process of hiring yet another chief animal control officer. In addition, the shelter is supposed to be staffed with two animal control officers, but currently only one is employed, and the most recent job posting closed on June 18 with no new hires announced since. This ongoing instability raises serious concerns. Why is it so difficult to retain staff in this essential department? What systemic issues are driving this high turnover? And most importantly, why is the shelter and the welfare of the animals in our community not a higher priority? The Kenai Animal Shelter serves not just our city, but functionally operates as a shelter for Soldatina as well, yet there appears to be little coordination or shared responsibility from our neighboring city during this time of need. Adding to the pressure is a complete lack of borough-level animal control services. While this is not the city's responsibility, it is in important context. Rescue groups are already overburdened by taking in animals from outside the city limits with no borough support. These volunteer-run organizations are at capacity handling stray intakes, medical care and rehoming, and cannot continue to absorb the additional responsibilities that rightfully belong to the city governments. I urge you to treat this situation with the seriousness it deserves. Please prioritize the hiring and retention of qualified staff, provide the support needed for those in these critical roles, and ensure that animal welfare and public safety are not sidelined. What specific steps will the city council take to support the chief animal control officer and restore stability to the shelter? And how can Kenai demonstrate a real commitment to the animals and the people who depend on these services? Thank you for your time.
Ms. Sheehan, thank you very much for your presentation. Would you be available for some questions if council has any?
I can try.
Anybody online? We have one council member there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Please come forward. And again, state your name and which city, and you'll have three minutes. And you got the light. Nope, not yet. It should turn red. There you go.
Got it. All right, sorry. Hi, everybody. My name is Sheri Powell. I do live in Kenai. Just moved here two months ago from Las Vegas. Spent pretty much the last year looking forward to and making arrangements to come here. It's a wonderful city. So far, everyone's been really, really kind. Sorry. This is a really difficult thing for me to talk about right now because the dream house that I moved into is also next to the drug house. I live at 1307 Kiana Lane. The house next door to me is 1305 Kiana Lane. In the two months since I've been here, we've had nothing but nightmarish experiences with the neighbors next door. The neighbors who came to visit us in the beginning, the very first week, said, you know, hey, there's a chat group because you live next to the problem house. Like, there's a chat group for the problem house next door to me. That's fantastic. We've had loose dogs, dogs that have attacked neighbors walking their dogs. I cannot tell you the amount of traffic that is at this house all the time. We've been told there's a mother who lives there. The children have come home. The children have previous histories that are not good. We've called animal control several times. I know that there's some issues with the animal control officers, not having enough staff right now. The girl that's talked to me has been nothing more than kind, but we still have dog issues. We have two dogs. So, we've been very concerned about our dogs being attacked. We take them out on leashes until our fence is built, which probably won't be until like next week. There's loud music, four-wheelers, motorcycles, yelling and screaming, tons of traffic. People are constantly parked in the street. They come and go at all hours. There's obvious drug use and drug behavior. We watched a gentleman the other day push broom the street while it was raining for about two hours. He then washed his car with a Homer bucket and a rag by spritzing it and then rubbing it really hard with his sleeve. We watched another girl spend an inordinate amount of time trying to build a tent in the back of her vehicle. Did not go well. There's trash in the yard. There's vehicles that do not work in the yard. There's a plethora of vehicles that may or may not be theirs, ATVs, motorcycles, not sure. When I called the police one day, there was dogs out, people were out, there was tons of activity going on. Within five minutes, everyone went inside, and a drone was put up in the air. The drone was then flown across my front porch. You've seen the drone a lot lately in the last few weeks. It almost as if it's when we call, they know. I know that sounds really weird, and I'm not trying to be a conspiracy person, but it's just weird that they seem to know when someone's on the way. I have countless pictures of cars and people because I didn't know what else to do. I thought maybe taking a photo would help in some way. I've been to the Kenai Police Department. I will say, the Kenai Police Department has been nothing but gracious, courteous, and very friendly, and really willing to listen to me on many, many occasions. I did spend about 30 minutes talking to an officer the other day who told me, well aware of the situation, well aware of what's going on there, and I do understand. It's just really hard for me. So, sorry. Coming here to live my dream and knowing that the situation is next door. So, I'm just asking, are we doing anything? Can we do anything? What do I need to do better? What does our community? What do the neighbors? What do the neighbors need to do? Is there any amount of help that can be given to this mother who's grown adult children, obviously, are not taking responsibility for themselves? Yesterday, the police came and raided that house. My boyfriend was at home, called and told me what was going on. But I came from Las Vegas. I've seen it all. I didn't expect to see it in Kenai. So, it really just breaks my heart, and all of you guys have been so wonderful. Everyone has been so kind here. So, I just wanted to let you know that I'm very happy to be here. I'm also very sad about what's going on next door. So, I respectfully just ask that you guys please look into it and take care of it for us. We'd really appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Would you be available for any questions from...
Yes.
Comments? Mr. Dothet?
There's one. So, you mentioned that the police were there just as recent as yesterday.
Yes.
Have you seen anything occur or anything continue on after the police were there? Or things seem to melt out a little bit?
It was going to be the most peaceful night I hoped for. We did... Because I haven't slept in a while. So, last night, a vehicle did show up with a person that we've seen before. He went in the house for a while. We're not sure what he was doing. We did see another motorcycle. A guy pulled in, left it at the house, and got in a vehicle and took off. And then it was quiet. That was the most peaceful six hours of sleep I've had since I moved here.
I'm glad to hear. Hopefully, we're moving in the right direction then.
Yeah, hopefully. Thanks, guys. Anybody else?
I appreciate you having the courage to come and speak to us and all that. And I think you've been doing the right thing, you know, calling the police. And I think that should continue as necessary. And the other thing that we have, a tool here, if you haven't, is talk to our planning department because it sounds like there may be some violations there that they would be able to help you with, the police wouldn't necessarily be able to. So, the planner happens to be in the back of the room here, too. But so, if that helps, or I might say, he's available during the day, too, or a phone call. And so, since you've got photos, I think that would be helpful. And I do know that our city responds to something in writing, you know, those kind of deals, you know? So, anyway, that would be very helpful. Okay, anybody else have any comments?
Just a quick question. The address is sticking in my mind. 1305 Kiana Lane? Is that your address or the... Okay, so 1305 is the problem house. Thank you.
Could you use your mic so we've got it?
I'm off the Kenaisboro Highway in Candlelight where AK Wellness is. Kiana is right back in there.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have another? Yeah. You know the drill.
I want to thank everybody for having us here tonight. This is great.
Could you state your name and...
Yes. My name's Paul Gold, and I'm also one of the residents at 1307 Kiana. And I've been also a witness to everything that's happening over there. What I would really like to see is the city get involved with having them clean the property. The property is like such disarray. There's motorcycles all over the place. They're probably spilling gas and oil. There's no driveway that these vehicles are parked on. They have so much stuff in their driveway that they can't park cars on their driveway. So, now they have five, six vehicles in the street. And when you come down the street, you have to stop in the street in order to get by somebody because they're blocking the whole entire street. Now, I can understand if they had a vehicle or two in the street, that's fine. Everybody does. But this is like excessive, like you can't even get a truck down the street. There's so much stuff out there. There's got to be some kind of fire code. You couldn't even get back there if there was a fire. You know, if the fire department was going there if they had a fire, I mean, there'd be loss of life there. There's an apartment complex behind it as well. So, if they had to get through there to get to the complex, I mean, they just wouldn't be able to. They would have to go onto our property probably to get through there. So, there's got to be some kind of violations there that they could, you know, get them to clean the place up a little bit. Everybody else out there has beautiful properties. It all looks great. That's one of my concerns. Also, like Sheri touched on, the drone thing, being flying across our property, kind of like looking in to see what we have over there, what's going on. It's kind of an invasion of our privacy. I don't know what type of licenses you need for those if you do or not, that kind of thing. And basically, the same ongoing drug activity. I mean, it's just obvious. We know about it. You guys know about it. And we are like front and center of the whole situation. So, we can tell you right when all the activity is happening. And they obviously do know, like as soon as we call the police, boom, everybody scatters and they're gone. It's like, do they have a police scanner? Is there somebody on the inside that's calling them and telling them what's going on? I mean, it's like, it's crazy. Like, you pick up the phone, and it's like, boom, they all scatter like bugs. It's like, you know? So, we need to figure out what's going on. Hopefully, with the police came out and they resolved the situation. Yesterday, I was out there in the yard working on my camper, and I saw some guy yelling, and next thing I know, there's guns all over the place. So, you know, it's not something I really expected to happen, but I'm glad that they're trying to do something about it. And I want to thank the city for helping us, you know, get this resolved. Kind of keep it short, but thanks for having me again, and that's all I got.
Well, would you be available for any questions? Councilmember Dothet?
It might not be a question, but it's just a good way to start is with the planning and zoning department as part of getting items cleaned up. And there are online ways. You can submit pictures online, start a case file. And as soon as they get a... Once they get the pictures online, and that starts a, you know, written file, that way you're not just calling and depending on a phone call. Put in writing, start a date and a timestamp with it. You know, you have your pictures that show what the complaints are, and then they can start following up. And that's the best way to get that file started is those online forms, super quick and easy. You can download your photos right to them. I had a couple. It'll ask you a few questions, and you can submit that, and then that'll start the process, and then they'll follow up with you on that, too.
Any further questions? Thank you. Okay. Come on up, state your name and which city, and be sure to turn on the light. You've got three minutes.
Hi, my name's Brad Brown. I live at 306 Baker Street, which is just around the corner from Sheri and Paul there. I wanted to take a few moments today to acknowledge the good work of the Kenai Police Department. Yesterday, they conducted an operation at a known drug house in our neighborhood. This comes after more than three years of daily drug trafficking, shuttling stolen goods, and a litany of other crimes at the property. My request of the council today is that you continue to find ways to support KPD in their endeavors, including but not limiting limited to adopting additional ordinances. That might be helpful in curbing some of the activities that are related to these drug trafficking kind of situations. To Mr. Dothet's point, an example of this was last winter when I worked with Planning and Zoning Director Kevin in the back, who is great, by the way, and trying to enforce the street parking restriction in City Code 13.30.030. I was basically at the end of my patience with the drug situation, so I was coming through the city code to try and find some means or method to call upon to help penalize the homeowners of this drug property. Working with Kevin at Planning and Zoning, the street parking restrictions seemed like one of the only handles available to really help scatter the criminals that the property seems to attract, even if that process had to be repeated every single night. One problem in my mind with this particular ordinance is that there's no escalation clauses for the penalties for repeat offenders. Additionally, Kevin and Planning and Zoning informed me that although City Code 13.30.040 authorizes the towing of such vehicles in violation of 13.30.030, there was no budget to help enforce it. So, it was functionally obsolete. So, I'm left wondering what good are city codes and laws that we don't have the funding to enforce? Crime that goes unpunished is a crime that will be repeated. Talking to some of the local law enforcement officers, the property in question is one of at least five known drug houses within city limits. The idea that there are a handful of known operational drug distribution properties within city limits that are known to the police is sadly baffling to me. We need to equip our police force with the ability to deal with these criminals in a timely manner. I believe we should make it hard for drug dealers to do business in Kenai. I understand that generally supporting the police and drug enforcement doesn't typically take a lot of convincing, but I firmly believe that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So, here I am, ready to squeak. I'll admit, I'm not familiar enough to be exactly what the long-term solutions to these problems should be. However, I do believe that the more methods that can be extended to KPD and affected citizens, the better our collective response can be. I believe the less proactive we are about the problem, the more it will continue to expand and ultimately have future responses be more costly, less effective, and more detrimental to the quality of life for the people who live in Kenai. Again, a big thank you to Kenai Police and all their hard work, and thank you to the council for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there any questions for Mr. Brown? Appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none. Circling back from what we've heard tonight through the city manager, is there... I mean, a lot of this are legal questions and issues that the city and the police are working through. It sounds like you're actively doing that. Do you have any insight that you can provide to these folks about, you know, how our police operate, at least as far as people's... Even if they may be a drug house, they have rights to... Is that something you can... You know, you can't just... You've got to have good evidence, I would imagine, and I am not an attorney.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. Yeah, it's probably not my strong suit. I wish the city attorney was here as well, but I think you highlighted the primary concern or the primary reason why unfortunately sometimes these things take way longer than they seem reasonable or seem like it should take is that, you know, we live in a country where, you know, everybody has rights, and infringement of those rights is not to be tolerated. So, but I'm definitely, you know, we definitely can have conversations if our officers need additional tools. I think we have a great department. I appreciate those comments from you folks. I think our planning and zoning department works hard on these issues as well. But like I said, I think unfortunately, in most of these cases, anytime I have a conversation with property owners about this, the first... One of the first things I say is, this is going to take way longer than you think it should, and you're going to be extremely frustrated as we walk through this. But I think we'll continue to try to do those things and keep Kenai a clean and safe place to live.
Thank you for your input, and I do hope that you folks continue doing what you're doing, you know, documenting and sending photos and whatnot. And, you know, if there's an online place here on the city website that you can utilize, I think all that is very helpful. Thanks. So, are there any further public comments on any items that are not on the agenda? Nobody online? Okay, seeing none. That brings us to public hearings. The first public hearing before us tonight is Resolution 2025-48, authorizing a contract award for vintage point exterior door replacement brought to us by administration. Pleasure of council. Councilmember Askin?
I move we adopt Resolution 2025-48 and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 2025-48? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council. Discussion of council. Was... Unanimous consent was requested. Are there any objections?
Question quick. I had a quick question.
Go ahead.
How many doors are there approximately? Do we have a number?
Thank you, Councilmember Askin, through the Vice Mayor. Yes, this will replace three doors, the main entrance, which is actually a double door, and then the two sides doors of the facility will be replaced with this project.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Okay. Unanimous consent was requested. If there's no objections, ordinance or rec. resolution 2025-48 is adopted. So, now we're on item E2, Resolution 2025-49, authorizing a contract award for the street condition assessment brought to us by administration. Pleasure of council. Councilmember Askin?
I move we adopt Resolution 2025-49 and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 2025-49? Be online. Seeing no one, discussion from council. Councilmember Dothet?
I'm just glad to see this moving forward. I know I've been wanting to see something like this to give us some updated numbers and some updated data on our road conditions, and I think this will give us some valuable insight on prioritizing where we need to spend our funds in the future and maybe grants that we might be able to apply for to help out with certain roads that come up on this list. So, I'm glad to see this moving forward. So I'm glad to see this moving forward.
Councilmember Daniel.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I too echo those comments, but just a quick question. About how long do we think the assessment will take?
Thank you, man. Councilmember Daniel, I'm going to defer to Lee.
Thank you. It's probably going to be about four months is what we put in here. I spoke with the consultant earlier today, and they're expecting to be on the ground by the end of the month and make sure they do all the visual inspections before the snow flies this year. So the idea would be that we can see a lot of the capital improvements expected so that we can get them into the capital improvement plan this winter.
City Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to state also, council, I think it's really important to note that this assessment not only will look at our paved streets, but we were able to do, do the addition of also doing our gravel roads and an assessment on those as well. So this will actually be looking at all city maintained roads, which I think is, are some of our gravel now, roads also need some love and attention. So this will help prioritize that as well.
Any further questions? I guess I did have one. Our gravel roads are probably in as good a condition as they'll ever be this time of year, and I was just curious what the scope of work is for the consultant when they go out and look at these roads. I mean, obviously ditches and widths and things like that, but what, what generally can we expect?
So the bulk of it is going to be pavement related, where they're going to be classifying various distresses and kind of giving a pacer condition rating for the road that'll, it's all going to be going into a big spreadsheet computer program so we can kind of create some evaluations of everything. But a similar scope of work will be done with gravel, where they'll probably be assigning the condition of the roads on like a one to five scale and notifying any, noting any major deficiencies that we need to fix. You know, there, there's various ones that have, you know, various potholes or sinkholes and things like that that could use some repair and things like that, that should be identified and captured in this report.
Through the city manager, will they be going through some of the maintenance records that we have, too?
Yeah, they're going to be looking at the maintenance that our staff does in-house versus what we contract as well to kind of get an idea of what we should be doing annually for various maintenance strategies, be it seal coating, crack sealing, grading, you know, all those types of things, and whether we should be looking at doing those things in-house or contracting them.
Great. Any further questions? Okay. Unanimous consent was requested. Are there any objections? Seeing none, Resolution 20 25 dash 49 is adopted. So that brings us to item E3, Resolution Number 20 25 dash 50, authorizing a contract award for the street light assessment brought to us by administration. Pleasure of council. Councilmember Askin.
I move we approve or adopt Resolution Number 20 25 dash 50 and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 20 25 dash 50? Seeing no one, bring it, we'll bring it back to council. Discussion from council. Councilmember Dothett.
Again, just similar to the street condition assessment, I'm glad to see this moving forward. These are always a hot topic item, especially coming up here in about a month. We'll start getting a bunch of people yelling and screaming once the sun leaves us. So it's great to say we can, that we're working forward with a long-term plan, and this will help be able to put our money in the right spots and see where we need to spend it. With both these assessments, I see some, some decisions coming up here in this next budget cycle about what we're going to spend money on and where we need to be putting it. Some big expenses are going to be coming up to, to light here, I think, pretty quick. No pun intended on that one.
So, councilmembers, go ahead.
Thank you. I think this question was kind of answered by Lee in the prior item, but I think I was just curious, what resources does the city have to keep track of essentially the, the assets that are going to be inventoried for long-term inventory management? And do you need more resources for that?
Yeah, so one of the things that's proposed in the street assessment is a purchase of a software program. So that's something that we'll definitely evaluate through the project moving forward. Other than that, I would say it's typically going to be GIS. We have the ability to track a lot of that information internally, that we can put, you know, updated road ratings and things like that into the system. We can track lots of streetlight data into the system as well, and we get into that and, and track all that data online so that we can keep track of it for specific items kind of spatially on the system there.
Thank you. Any further questions? I want to know generally how this, this, this streetlight assessment, how that might all, we've got, we've got streetlights being repaired as well. We've got a contract for that. Will they kind of be interfacing, working together, providing information, back and forth? Is that useful?
It's possible. It's not the same consultant, so we could certainly use our consultant that does, contractor that does a lot of the streetlight repair and bring them in to work with them. It's a possibility. It's not something that's really been proposed as part of this project at this time. The consultant's basically going to be starting out by doing an entire inventory, going to every streetlight, tracking down what we have, on off, you know, what, what the, what the light is, what the pole is. They're going to be collecting a lot of data that we just do not have physically written down available at our hands. So kind of getting a really detailed inventory is going to be a great start for us.
Thank you for that information. And I, I wanted to mention, too, that I was poking around, I think in the planning department's part of their website, and there was a map that showed where all of the lights are in town. I had not seen that before, the various locations, and I think that's very useful for the public. Thanks for whoever put that together. It's a first step so we can kind of report lights, you know, from, from home. So unanimous, was there any further questions of anyone? Unanimous consent was requested. Are there any objections? Okay, seeing none. Resolution 20 25 dash 50 is adopted. So now that brings us to item E4, Resolution 20 25 dash 51, authorizing a purchase of water treatment chemicals brought to us by administration. Pleasure of council. So Councilmember Askin.
I move we adopt Resolution 20 25 dash 51 and ask for unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Moved in second. Is, is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 20 25 dash 51? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council. Discussion from council. Councilmember Askin.
I have a question for Mr. Lee. When we did the tour with you at the treatment plant, is this the chemicals that you were looking for that was going to save us money or?
Yes. This is used for water treatment, so this isn't at the wastewater treatment plant. But yeah, this is one of the things we were discussing when we're on site. So this is the new polymer that we've switched over to from our previous polymer. So like I identified, we're, we're saving roughly $8,000 a tote with this chemical versus what we were using before to filter the, this, this is mainly just for treating the color in the water and getting all the tannins out.
Great, thank you.
I guess on a follow-up on that, I just had a neighbor asking yesterday about, had we been switched over to this new chemical, or was there just some flushing going on because they were a little concerned about some kind of discolorations in their water recently?
So not recently. So several, we've been using this one for a couple of months now. We originally got a permission to use a different product from DUC, so we tried that one first, and it was giving a slightly, not treating as well as the previous product we were using. So we switched over to this one that we're now using and is giving, if not better treatment than our original chemical. So we're, we're pretty much back to where we were at this point.
All right. I'll let him know. Thanks.
Any further questions? Seeing, seeing no further question. Unanimous consent was requested. Are there any objections? Seeing none. Resolution 20 25 dash 51 is adopted. Now we're on item E5, Resolution 20 25 dash 52, declaring a right-of-way for a 60-foot by 230-foot portion of Sixth Street as, as dedicated between lots two and three, Kenai Meadows Edition Number One. That's plat number 20 23 dash 48, not needed for a public purpose and consenting to its vacation brought to us by administration. Pleasure of council. Councilmember Askin.
I move we adopt Resolution 20 25 dash 52 and ask for unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved in seconded. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 20 25 dash 52? Seeing no one, that brings us back to council. Council discussion.
And this is probably a question.
Councilmember Dothett.
Yeah, this is probably a question for staff possibly could. This is vacating one right-of-way for my clarification, but still dedicating another new right-of-way for access behind there. Is that correct? To those, there's still access road to behind those back lots where the city owns?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Dothett. So KPHI, which is, they are doing exactly what you proposed with this resolution, however, only will vacate the existing right-of-way and declare it not needed. So the actual dedication will take place when the final plat is recorded from KPHI. We had numerous discussions about this today with staff and the borough because it feels a little disjointed. However, in borough code, it requires the city to take action. Once the Borough Planning Commission takes action, we have 30 days to take action. If we don't take action, it's as if, as if we are approving. So whatever action the borough took would, would become effective. We had concern that the actual dedication hasn't taken place yet. However, if anything should run afoul, that dedication, we've, it's been through our Planning and Zoning Commission. They've approved that plat. It's gone through Borough Planning Commission. They've preliminary approved that plat. They have to internally go through the rest of the review at the borough and, and get the plat finalized. If for any reason that plat should not be finalized and recorded, which would dedicate that new right-of-way that you're speaking of, this vacation would not take place either because that will take place on the same plat. So I think we feel like we're in a pretty good place and we're covered in this. It, it does seem a little bit disjointed, so I appreciate the question.
Thank you. I was just curious because I saw on one of the renderings, it showed the new right-of-way, but it didn't speak about it specifically in this. So that, for clarification purposes, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was still going to be in there.
Thanks for that clarification. Are there any further questions? Okay. Seeing none. Unanimous consent was requested. Are there any objections? Seeing none. Resolution 20 25 dash 52 is adopted. So that brings us down to new business. Item H, ordinance 3482, 20 25, 20 25, amending the official zoning map and land use table by rezoning 13 properties zoned with multiple zones and assigning one zoning district per parcel tract or government lot brought to us by Dothett. Councilmember Dothett. So Councilmember Dothett.
I think we can get it in one more time. Yes, I'd like to make a motion introducing ordinance 348225. Refer this ordinance to the August 27th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for recommendation for the commission and to schedule the public hearing for us for September 3rd, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved in seconded. Are there any further discussion on the, on the motion to introduce? Was unanimous consent requested?
I'll request unanimous consent.
Thank you very much. We could vote on it, but unanimous consent is now requested. Are there any objections? Seeing, ordinance 348225 is introduced and, and passed on to Planning and Zoning. So now we are to item I, Commission Reports, Council on Aging. That would be mine. Council on Aging met on July 10th, and they, they discussed the 2025 client satisfaction survey results. Those, that, those survey results are in the, in our packet in the city manager's report. I suggest or encourage everybody to take a look at that. It's, it does cover a lot of different ground and everything, and I thought it was very positive for our, our senior center. The next meeting of August 14th has been counseled, so the next meeting will be, I think it's September 11th. So that brings us to Airport Commission. Councilmember Daniel.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have nothing new to report, and it was, the next, this next meeting also has been canceled, so it won't be till September 11th as well.
Okay. Harbor Commission, Cassena.
Thank you. No meeting since we last met. Recent meeting was canceled, and let me see here, the next scheduled meeting is September 8th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you for that. Parks and Recreation Commission, Councilmember Dothett.
They did not have a meeting, and I did go to a work session for the Airport Commission, and it was a work session, was a meeting about the new hiring of the new airport manager. And it was just some ideas they lost off with the city manager about what they want to see in the future, and they had a good work session discussing that and what their hopes and dreams are. So that's all that, that was there. And Parks and Rec, it's been insanely busy, so of course they didn't have a meeting, and then their next meeting has also been canceled, so we'll catch up here at the end of the month, I'm guessing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Brings us to Beautification Committee. Councilmember Sonar.
Actually, I'm going to back up to Planning and Zoning. I'm going to start with Planning and Zoning.
Oh, Planning and Zoning.
So Planning and Zoning did meet. They met on July 23rd, and most of their activity revolved around a consideration of plats. They approved Resolution PZ 20 25 dash 25, and this was a, it was a recommendation approval of a preliminary plat, Terra B subdivision in the Swarner addition to replat two lots, Lot Three and Lot Four, Block One, Terra B subdivision, Township Six North, Range Eleven West, Section 34, Seward Meridian, to the Kenai Peninsula Borough in the Rural Residential Zoning District. So they did replat those two blocks, and they approved it, and that was pretty much the summation of their activity that night.
Thank you for that report. I guess you're up again. For Beautification.
Beautification has not had a meeting.
Pardon?
They have not had a meeting.
Okay, they have not had a meeting.
No.
So no report.
No report.
Okay. Thank you very much. So that gets us down to the reporter, the mayor. Mayor Gabriel's obviously not here tonight. He, I think it's the first time in two years they actually had an opening for, for their nets. So he, two years, three years? Okay. Yeah, it's been a long time. So anyway, he was with family and whatnot, watching the nets. He called me to, to, you know, pass on that basically regretted not being able to come, but you know, he kind of needed to, to do that, as we can all understand. He also asked that I pass on that he, after a long consideration, has decided not to run again this, this fall. And he said it would be okay for me to, to pass that on. He, he is looking forward to traveling some more. I think he's got grandkids scattered across this country, and he's wanting to enjoy them and his family. They've got a big family, and that's very important to them. So that's the reason why he's doing that. It was a, it was a tough decision, he said. I tried talking him out of it, but there was, there was no, no getting there with that. So the decision's been made, so he will not be, be running this, this fall. So that will leave the mayor's position up for grabs. And since I'm speaking of that, I just wanted to point out that I have, with that information, I have put in my application, and it's been accepted by the clerk for that position. So we'll see how that, that rolls out this fall. October 7th is the October 7th is the, is the date for the, for the election. So kind of moving on to item K, administrative reports, city manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. It seems like it's been quite a while here, so a few things to report on the staffing and recruitment updates. So the airport manager recruitment, we did close, we went through evaluations, we interviewed five individuals and we elected to repost the position. It's out. Let's see, first review is after August 8th, so the end of this week with right now tentative closing date for August 22nd. So continuing to work on that. Our former airport manager, Mary Bondron, has agreed to come back and serve as interim director while we complete this recruitment. So really appreciate Mary's willingness to come back and, and work with us once again. The building official position has been extended and, and applications are currently being reviewed every two weeks. Chief Animal Control Officer recruitment was also extended with review, applications to take place this week, August 7th. And, and I was going to report on the temporary closure of the shelter. We did have that presentation here. I guess a couple pieces of information I think are really vital for the public is seeing some of the comments out there. I can absolutely assure the council and the public that no animals were euthanized in order to accommodate this temporary closure. And really the, the only closed part, portion of the facility is being available to the public for adoption of animals, which there are none in the shelter right now and/or being able to waive your animal or give your animal up. That, those services are not available right now. We're still responding to any man, animal emergency. We have one animal in the shelter, I just said we had none, we have one animal in the shelter that's going to be picked up by a rescue later. Staff are going in, taking care of that animal, feeding, cleaning and doing all the necessary things. And I did appreciate, you know, the comments from the public there and talked about what's going on with the working conditions and things. And this closure is 100% predicated on trying to preserve the employees that we do have there and these extensive vacancies, the long-term vacancies and the, and the toll that takes on our existing employees. And this was able to, with this brief closure, we're able to accommodate a person's leave that's been scheduled for some time and we didn't feel it was appropriate to count, to cancel. So that's a little bit about what's going on in animal shelter and it'll be back open, I believe, on the 12th, chief, 11th? 11th or 12th and operations is normal, so, and we're continuing to look for staff for that facility. Kenai Spur Highway Phase Two, this is a project that will expand, extend the four lane from Eagle Rock Road to Sport Lake area and it will also provide lighting for the entire corridor there. That project was released for bid by Department of Transportation, State DOT, in July. So excited to see that. It's tentatively scheduled right now for construction to be completed by June of 2028. So be anxious to see how those bids come in and hopefully they're able to award and find a good contractor. Out in the Kenai River Flats, the state parking facility just on the K Beach side of Warren Ames Bridge is going to be closed, actually should be closed now, August 4th through September 30th. They are going to repave that parking lot, make striped in there. I think maybe, I don't know about expanding, but definitely repaving that. They're also going to be installing, I want to say at least a thousand linear feet of elevated walkway down along the river with stairs to access down to the water, the mud, depends on the tide. So that project is going on, it's not a city project, but I think folks might want to be aware of that. Regarding swimming pools, again, we've reached out to the school district looking for clarification and additional information to start potentially evaluating that opportunity. I know this is a really busy time of year for the school district, so we haven't gotten any information back, but we're definitely still trying to gather some of that. We did wrap up the personal use fishery, ended on July 31st as scheduled. You know, our crews were out the day after doing cleanup and I think the beaches look really, really good after that. I actually ran into our old Parks and Rec director and he paid a really, very nice compliment. He was very impressed with how clean the beaches were within a day or two after the close of the fishery. So, and I know that, that meant a lot to Bob when he was with us, so it was, that was a very nice compliment to get. Revenue regarding personal use fishery was strong this year. We did end up, we came, our revenue pictures came in about 108% of what was budgeted, so we exceeded our revenues a little bit there, about 546,000 net of sales tax. We're still accumulating all of the bills, so I can't give you a full financial report yet, but it was, revenue wise, it was a good year. I've, I've learned with, you know, I think, let's see, this would have been my 17th personal use fishery with the city. One thing I've learned in 17 years of personal use fishery is to never say never and there's always something new that comes up. One thing that we did experience a little bit this year and maybe something we want to work with council on addressing in code is we did have a couple of residential lots and residential subdivisions that were utilized solely for tent camping in connection with the fishery. The only provisions we have in code that could restrict that is they have to provide adequate sanitation facilities, which they did, they provided porta potties for these lots, but it, it's something new that we saw that hasn't, I haven't seen before and our code definitely has some tools in it to address campers, RV campers on residential lots, but not tent camping like was the case this year in at least one primary location. So something we can talk about, I think we have plenty of time this winter to, to look at that and try to find a good solution if council wants to work, work with us on that. On the bluff erosion project, I think, I believe construction's doing well. The Public Works Director and I are on a meeting once a week with the core. We actually listen to a core and contractor meeting once a week as well. I think the 12th material barge entered the river today. Yeah, so they're, they're making good progress. I think within the next couple of weeks, they'll be dismantling that abutment that they constructed where they're, they have the barge tied up and that they will construct a similar abutment north, up north by the senior center. So I think that project's going well. I'm going to defer to Kevin for just a minute to talk about the storefront improvement program that he's got going right now.
Thank you, Mr. Eubank. We did open our storefront and streetscape improvement grant. I think this is our fourth round, if I'm not mistaken. It's been well received and we thank council for allowing it to be in the budget this, for this year. We wanted to shift it to the fall so that people can start getting quotes while people are still out there. You can actually see what it is you want to improve before the snow flies and then hopefully when construction, our intent is to go through October 17th with applications, you'll start to hear it on the radio in September and October. We intend to award right around Halloween so that everyone's ready to go when breakup happens next year and we can get, get everything kind of refreshed as spring hits. So again, we appreciate it. It's been a pretty good thing and every, every round gets a little bit busier, so hopefully this one's a, we'll knock it out of the park again.
Thank you, Kevin. Next item, Bush Doctor Cabin, the historic cabin over at, on the visitor's center. We've been working with visitor's center staff and Carol Lee Hansen to try to finalize some plans and, and prepare to get that cabin operational for hopefully next summer. We're going to continue working on that and appreciate the chamber and Ms. Hansen's willingness to work with us and see if we can't move that project forward. So if you don't know, the city's holding its surplus auction right now. It went live on August 4th, it'll close on August 17th. Folks want to go look at, it's quite a, it's quite a list of items this year that the city's surplusing. It's been a couple of years since we've done one of these. You can go to www-publicsurplus.com, enter city of Kenai and you can see all the items that are there and, and available for bid. City manager's office, we are working on developing a community survey. We released a RFP, request for proposals for this. It doesn't trigger the dollar threshold requiring request for proposals, but I'm really glad that we did. We've had 14 respondents to that RFP, so four of us have been going through and reading notes and we'll be meeting, I believe tomorrow and, and trying to pick one of those. No council action needed, it's below your, the threshold, but I just wanted you to be aware we are. That will kick off the project and then we'll actually develop the survey, they'll identify the method of delivery and, and we'll keep working through that. One thing we are trying to do is we are, we did request to have a statistically valid survey, which is a little bit different than some, so it will, it should provide credible results when we get done, so looking forward to that. Kenai Library is winding down the summer reading program. It ends tomorrow, August 7th at noon. The Kenai Area Wide Old Timers Luncheon is on Friday, August 15th over at the Kenai Senior Center. It's always a, a really big event and really great event, recognizing some of the longstanding Kenai area residents. So, and I would, last thing I hear is on page 143 of the packet in the city manager's report, Finance Director Swarner completed preparation of a popular annual financial report. Now this report is for last fiscal year. These can only be completed after the audit is done and we understand that this one is, is a little bit, you know, late, but I think he went through the exercise in preparation for issuing a popular annual financial report for fiscal 2026. A popular annual financial report is designed to be significantly easier read for residents, provide high level information in an easy to read and understand format. And I think it's a great step forward, it's something I wanted to do as finance director and just never got to get it implemented. So just want to call your attention, I think we're going to publish it online on the city's website, but I think the 2020, fiscal 2025 one will come out shortly after the audits completed and may look at distributing it to the community as well. So I just want to call your attention to it so you can take a look. I think it's a great piece of work and appreciate his efforts and staff efforts in putting that together. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thought you might have a third page. Thank you for that. Any questions to the city manager?
Just one, I know we talked about the, the highway expansion project. It came up some, a couple of times this month. The Eagle Rock area, I know it's a state project, I know they were working on possibly expanding some parking there. We heard anything from the city side of things as they're moving forward with that or what the status is on that?
Thank you, Councilmember Daughtry. I do not have, I don't know the status of that project. I know the state acquired property, but I have not seen any preliminary designs or designs for that.
Thank you, it always comes up this time of year when everybody's parking on the highway, so.
Any further questions of the city manager comments? I wanted, wanted to say thank you for that popular annual report. Thank you, Mr. Swarner, for that too. As I was reading through your report, I found that and I found that very interesting. It's like the public, it was very readable and concise, very good. So that brings us to the city attorney. Mr. Bloom is not online, is he? Okay, just thought I'd check. So that brings us to the city clerk.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Naxte. Just a reminder that the candidate filing period is open for the mayor and council races. We are in the middle of recruiting election officials. We assist the borough with finding our AVO officials for the city and we have vacancies on many commissions. The vacancy noticing the state open as long as there's openings, but we're not getting candidates and that is my report, available for questions.
Are there any questions for the clerk? Seeing none. Brings us down to item L, additional public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to, to address the council at this time? Or, and you came all the way down here, you must have something. And you're the only one in the audience that could.
Talking about the highway, I remember when some of the comments were open to the public when the state people or whoever was here and they were taking, you know, information from, response from the public regarding spots along the highway, you know, anything. And certainly that pull off, which I'm familiar with since I go by that every day, several times a day, usually to go back and forth to my house and it is, you know, it's a nasty place for sure and you get this time of dip netting season where you've got cars and trucks, a lot of trucks and trailers that are, you know, this position in the ditch and a little bit on the highway. It's, you know, it's not maybe the most dangerous spot, but it's certainly one that caused me to make a comment on it at the time and actually the fellow that I was talking to who was writing all this down on the state comment sheets and fortunately he was a little quicker than I am, he said, well, that seems like it should be on the other side of the road. Yet you're right, you're absolutely right, it should not be on that side, this side. So if you are in a position to ever make a comment on it, that's just a little word to the wise, remember which side of the highway you're talking about there. I'll be very, very interested to see how much of this Kenai Spur Highway gets renovated finally, 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 and if we're going to end up with the same situation only in reverse that the other third half, whatever it is of the spur will now be left to disintegrate like this part has, it's been left since the last revamping of the improvement of this paving. I'm, do anybody have any comments on that? Administration folks? Do you know? Anything about it?
You might want to talk to the state.
I mean, I don't know, you're the ones who would know something. So we're going to leave this renovated section of the highway to be as it is and has it has been and then redo the part that was left the last time and have a reverse situation and we'll watch that part disintegrate while the newly renovated section will be good for a long time. Comments? No comments?
I can assure you the state's doing the best job.
I'm sure they are. I'm sure they are. And incidentally, I think the beach cleanup was spectacular this year, just spectacular. A few years ago, I made the absolutely stupid trip to the beach the day after dip net with my dog, no less. Dip net season hadn't, hadn't quite ended because it was littered with carcass material. Oh my God. I didn't stay long, obviously. Anyway, thank you all for your work tonight.
Thank you, Ari.
Oh, about the art center. Right now, the, the show in the, that's up right now in the small gallery, to the jail gallery in the back are some of the pieces from the last couple murals, which is just a great evolution of that show, which I'm so enthusiastic about because those huge pieces of canvas are then cut out of the original murals and repurposed for show number two or three and positioned in the back room or jail gallery. And that's just a great use of the material for one thing and also gives that piece of art a new life and they, they always need it. And so it forces the artists to take a new look at what they've done, how they're presenting it framed or whatever. And it's a very interesting show that's in the main gallery right now too. This guy, this fellow, this artist has, his work is very, very large. His prices are quite large too, so you might want to take a look at that. It's, it's interesting, it has a lot of landscape kind of stuff in it. Obviously, I'm not overly enthusiastic about it, sorry. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Marian, Elson? Thank you so much. Okay, there's nobody else in? There's nobody else in chambers, or anybody online, Madam Clerk, who would like to speak? Okay, so that brings us down to item L2, council comments. We'll start online with Councilmember Casena.
Thanks for letting me go first. I just wanted to say, I attended the 4th of July festivities, and it's, they were a huge hit. It's obvious to anyone who attended, so thanks for everyone at the chambers and at the city who helped with that. Also wanted to welcome a new resident and school principal for Kaleidoscope School of Arts and Science, Marcy Barber. She is from Florida, so it's nice to have a new principal for one of our local schools. Thanks to Brian for his years of service as our city mayor. I appreciate all that he did for the city and for everyone, I think, on council right now. I think he appointed every one of us to our commission seats initially, so thanks to him. And then, I'd like to also congratulate Grace Khan, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, a Summer Hero recipient at, for the Summer of Heroes for Alaska Communications, but I'd like to issue a special congratulations to student representative Tanner for being the Alaska Communications Summer of Hero recipient as well. So, great work. I think we're all super proud of the things that you're doing.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dothett?
Yes, I had a busy July. We, the 4th of July festivities, got roped into doing the dunk tank on the 4th of July, and that was an interesting endeavor, for sure. Fortunately, I think people are fairly happy with the city, so they weren't too eager to dump city council members, so that was good. For some reason, I couldn't get Brian to do it, though. He just said no, but, and luckily, it was warm weather, beautiful day. So, and then, I had a great turnout for that. The parade was awesome, as always. And then, I went over and helped out at the Progress Days for the Sodasodana. Again, got roped into doing the dunk tank over there. That was a fun venue. Again, awesome weather for it, so that worked out. Lot of good showing over there. It was nice to, we had several people with the city chamber of Kenai Chamber helping out over there. With the Sodasodana chambers, there's a lot of good teamwork between the two chambers going on right now, so that's nice to see. The two chambers are working together and planning stuff together and sharing resources, and so it's great to see that moving forward. So, other than that, it was, as always, a busy summer, but as we all know, amazing fishing season, and it's always nice when there's tons of fish. Everybody seems to be in much better moods, so I think that was shared with most people in the dipnet and the sport fish fishery, so. And I know the drifters that were able to get out there had a really good year, too. So, it's good to see a bunch of fish out there, and we had great weather, so I'm glad everybody stayed safe. And I only made it to the ER twice in July and no major issues, so I think that's a win for four boys, so.
Okay, very good. Student Representative Tanner?
All right. So, Free Kenai Central High School, on August 9th is a Kenai Peninsula football jamboree. On August the 11th, new student registration will begin. On August the 15th is co-adversity football versus Kodiak High School. On August the 15th through the 16th is girls varsity volleyball at Palmer High School. On August the 16th is also a junior varsity volleyball jamboree. On August the 16th is a girls' C-team volleyball jamboree at Walsilla. On August the 16th is also junior varsity and varsity football at Nikiski High School. On August the 18th is a cross-country meet at Nikiski High School. And August the 18th night is freshman night and open house. For Kenai Alternative High School, new student interviews will start on August the 11th and will continue through August the 15th. For Connections, on August the 13th is an in-service day, so the offices will be closed. On August the 16th, Connections will have a booth at the Sodasodana Sports Center Field House grand opening, and their pre-K program, Ready, Set, Connect, will be accepting applications through the 8th of August, and that program will start on the 27th. And other than that, school starts on the 20th, so that's something to look forward to.
Thank you for your report. Thanks for being here tonight. You must, this must be like one of the busiest times for you, too, right? We were debating whether you're going to, I thought you would make it. Thank you. Councilmember Soenart?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, Councilmember Casena stole my thunder on student Representative Tanner, but I also want to offer congratulations to his ACS Scholarship Award for the Heroes of Summer. Did I say that right? I always go it backwards, Summer of Heroes, but I got to see him get it in person, so. Anyway, congratulations. I also want to say thank you to Mayor Gabriel for all his time and work with the city and the council, and just his level of experience will be missed. There's a lot of institutional knowledge leaving with the vacancy of his seat, and that's always sad to see something like that. But anyway, continue to enjoy summer, everyone, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Esken?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Swarner, for that report. It was really informative. I've already passed it on to a couple of people that had some questions, so thank you for that. Congratulations to student Representative Tanner. Sorry I missed it, I was at work today. I also attended the 4th of July festivities. I didn't volunteer for the dunk tank either.
It wasn't a very long list.
But stay safe. I come up on the overturned truck with the fish like five minutes after it happened, so that was, that was my adventure for the week. So, stay safe.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Sorry to have said multiple times, but thank you, student Representative Tanner. You've done an awesome job. Congratulations, your award. And I cannot believe it's two weeks till school starts. That is wild. And thank you for that reminder as well. That's right around the corner. And thank you to the city manager, city staff, for being able to work throughout. I mean, that report, there's a lot going on here. It is impressive what we're working on and what we're getting through, and trying to get some of these vacancies filled. And also excited to meet Mr. Logan Parks for the deputy clerk position. That'll be exciting, get that filled. And yeah, no, enjoy the last of the summer. It's been awesome. And I did not get the dunk tank amazingly. I don't know how you didn't rope me into that down there.
You never asked. I heard that dunk tank has a heater in it, is that true?
That I purchased, yes.
Does it work?
It does help a little bit, yes.
Okay, moving on, we have, we have no executive session, no pending items. Did you have something? Okay. So, that brings us to adjournment with no further business before the body. We are adjourned. Thank you.